Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the Norton Planning Board's... Excuse me, gentlemen. Welcome to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, February 7th. Again, this is a hybrid meeting, so members of the public are welcome to participate in person or remotely. In person, we are here at the Norton Public Library in 68 East Main Street. For those looking to join online via video, you can use the Zoom link available at the meeting agenda or using the Zoom app using ID 638-929-1060. There's also a dial-in number available should you choose to join by phone only. Meeting is also available on Norton Cable Access Channel 15 and will be available on Norton VSN's YouTube channel after the meeting. In addition, please feel free to email questions for the board ahead of the meeting to Brian Carmichael's town staff, and they can be read into the record during the appropriate meeting item. So with that out of the way, welcome, everybody. We have a couple of agenda on for today. Looks longer than it will be, since we have a couple of items that are looking to be continued to a future meeting. But in terms of, I don't think we have any additional for Planning Board's business and policies. We do have one bill, which was, I'll pass around, which is just for a peer review account. Mr. Bueller. So pass this around. Obviously, I know that new people joining the board and everything, so peer reviews are funded by the applicant through a account, and then we pay part of that account to the engineer doing the peer review. So no money actually comes out of the town, but we're still in charge of the bill. Okay? And approval of minutes, we don't have any minutes to approve at this time, so we'll skip that and move right along. Just taking these agenda items in order, even though we do have a couple of items that are looking to be continued. We will be continuing Zero King Philip and Zero South Washington Street, and we can take those as we get to them. The first one is Zero King Philip. Their seat continues to February 28th, so without time for the peer review to take place.
Turn right onto East Main Street. Then turn right onto South Street.
Any questions or discussions related to that?
Motion to continue special permit 17104 until February 28th, 2023.
Second. Thank you, Laura, for the motion, and Wayne, for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to continue Zero King Philip? Okay. Hearing none, because we do have a member joining us remotely. I'm going to go through a roll call vote, so I'll call everybody by name. I'll start in person, and then Alan, I'll get to you at the end. So Eric, I'll start with you.
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Danny?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
Alan?
Hi.
And I will vote aye as well. So we are continuing 17104 to February 28th. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a site plan review, 17285 and 17290 for 353 and 355 Old Colony Road. This is continued from a couple of meetings, but I know we discussed this more in length on our January 17th meeting. So I'll let these gentlemen get set up here and provide updates as it relates to this project.
Good evening. Thank you, folks, for having us again. My name is Walter Hermano, professional engineer, Hermano Engineering, here tonight for IRS Plain Street LLC. As Chairman explained, we continue moving on to tonight. We've incorporated comments from the peer review engineer and also from the town planner regarding landscaping. For the peer review engineer comments, there was roughly exactly eight of them. I'll go over them quickly. We moved the special wastewater tanks from the rear of the property to now underneath the asphalt between the two buildings. We put a cut-off wall between Sedlin Four Bay and the infiltration basin. We also have additional mowing on the Sedlin Four Bay to slow down the infiltration of groundwater. We even incorporated an improved entrance where we're using the existing entrance, so now that will facilitate a better flow of traffic onto the property and the private. There were some inlet, interlet disagreement between the plan and the report that has since been corrected. We've also incorporated on long-term operation and maintenance, a cutting of the mowing of the infiltration, the open infiltration basin, to be done regularly with the rest of the property instead of twice a year as DEP recommends, but that was a good comment from the reviewer. That way, we wouldn't have any weed growth growing inside the infiltration base. Regarding landscaping.
There it is.
There we go.
Over the green.
We now have a more robust landscaping plan. The landscaping that has been added is the buffer between the buildings and the roadway. There's several trees to be planted on the left, several trees to be planted on the right. There's also hedges. Trees will be six-foot minimum height, edges will be three-foot minimum height. The arborvitae proposed before on the left, those will also be a minimum six-foot height. And there's also, only some, can't quite remember what's going in front of building.
Hydrangeas.
Hydrangeas, thank you. Hydrangeas over here in front of 353. You see, the grass area all in between both of those. So we have a nice robust buffer that I believe now meets the landscaping requirements in the bylaw. Correct me if I'm wrong, Frank, but these were added last time?
Yeah, we had the sign detail, I believe, the last time we were at the meeting.
We've incorporated all the comments and suggestions that have been put forward. Does anyone have any questions?
And I look into the peer review comments, it looks like pretty much everything has been addressed. There's always, there's always auto, HydroCAD clarifications in pretty much every peer review that goes on, so. Do members of the board have any specific questions at this time?
Just have one quick. I let Rob know, and this is not pertaining to local permits, but before starting construction, you will need to secure a permit from ASCOT for cartcows and vehicular access. But they would need to see our approval first. But you can reach out to them, and they can guide you through the process. But just because it's a state road.
Our plan is to use the existing opening.
We're doing no work whatsoever within the state layout.
Oh, you're not, it's not in the setback either, the 50-foot setback?
Well, the state layout ends right here. The 50-foot setback is private.
Oh, okay.
Not state property.
Okay.
There is, as you indicated, a 50-foot wide access easement across here, but that access easement is for the benefit of the several properties beyond this site.
Would you be connecting to any utilities from that road?
There will be the addition of water lines, one for each facility, connecting to the main that's in the road.
Okay, I think they have a separate utility permit that you might need to work through them, but it's the first time I've done a state road layout, so I just double-checked.
Not a problem at all. I know that the applicant will be obtaining all necessary permits to do the work.
Yeah, I think that's not our jurisdiction. I was just, I felt they applied, so I just wanted to ask.
Thank you.
State government doesn't like to add any additional layers, paperwork, or anything.
Exactly.
Okay. I didn't see it on the plan. You mentioned arborvitae, he's on the, my compass directions, what?
I checked them all, they're good.
They're, Norton has very hungry deer, so if they're deer resistant, then we're good to go then.
Yep, the shrubs in particular, the hedge shrubs that I put in are particularly resistant to deer. Says the Google machine.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
Compromised of the applicant back there, who put the landscaping together.
Yeah, green giants are specifically very good for deer, you know, deer resistant as well as deer barriers, so.
We have lots of hourglass-shaped, like hourglass-shaped plants.
Yeah, yes. They don't like, they don't like the green giant. It's a good grant for a buffalo.
Okay.
If you're good with the hydrangeas, I'd like to know what you're doing. I killed all ours, never flown.
Bill, thank you for the arborvitae, these are their favorite.
Okay. Alan, just because you're joining remote, I'm going to put you on the spot here and just make sure that, see if you have any questions or comments, since I can't quite see you next to me here.
No questions, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. So, from my perspective, I think the peer review is essentially settled. I didn't have anything open items in that, from that perspective, correct?
No, it's all been addressed. I'm pretty quick to Wilson Press.
Thank you very much.
Our next action would be to close a public hearing, unless we feel we have any further comments or evidence to take in, and then make a motion related to the site plan review.
I move a closed public hearing for SP 17285 and 17290.
Second. Okay. I'm not sure who got the second there, but leaning towards Jim. We have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Okay. Hearing none, I will go through the roll one more time, and Eric, I will start with you.
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Danny?
I'm staying.
Laura?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
Alan?
Hi.
And I will vote aye, so the public hearing is now closed. And we may can make a motion related to the site plan review as a whole.
Motion to approve site plan review numbers 17285 and 17290.
Second. And just to confirm, is that recommendation for approval with standard conditions?
With standard conditions.
Okay. And does your second still stand? Second still stands. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion or request to add any additional conditions beyond standard? Okay. Hearing none, I will go through the roll for a vote. Eric?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Danny?
I'm staying.
Laura?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
Alan?
Aye.
And I will vote yes as well. So, site plan is approved, and we'll get the decision out to you, and we'll keep moving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for the assistance and all the feedback, too, it was very important.
Moving on to the next item on our agenda. Listed is a site plan review and special permit 17404, 17406 for Zero South Washington Street. That applicant is also seeing continuance to February 28th, leading to complete a review with a traffic consultant.
Motion to continue SPR, SP 17404 and 17406 to February 28th.
Second. Thank you, Eric and Jim. Is there any further discussion on the motion to continue? Okay. Hearing none, I'm going to go through everybody one more time here. Eric?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Danny?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
Alan?
Aye.
And I will vote yes as well. Okay, so we're continuing on that item to February 28th. Right on down the road, the last item on our agenda in terms of public hearings is SP 17417. That is 182 South Washington Street. The owner's advocate is McDonough Family Limited Partnership. I believe we do have representatives from the applicant here. So I'll ask if they'd like to come up and speak, and then we can give instructions to this project, which is an application for the construction of a 105-foot monopole tower.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Attorney Henry Sousa. My office is located on West Main Street here in Norton. I represent the McDonough Family Limited Partnership. And with me tonight, I have Christopher Olson, their site consultant, and Mr. Andrew Pigne, who is a radio frequency design consultant. Thought I had him all wrong. This area of the community is so industrial. We have attempted to create a plan for you that is consistent and in compliance with the wireless communication facility bylaw. 105 feet tall, and it is an monopole. You may be aware, I'm just going to throw it out there, because I know that it's still a small town in many ways, but we had originally sought variances to construct a larger, taller tower, I should say, and to do it as a lattice tower to create the stability for microwave communications. We also hoped to get the police and fire department and emergency services located on that type of tower, because it is an area of poor communications for them when police and firemen go inside any building in that area, which I won't mention in particular names, but there are some buildings they visit, police do relatively frequently. You lose their communications inside. It was, it was the bridge too far, I think it was, there were concerns about the height of the tower, so we're trying to present something to you tonight that is shorter and on a monopole and in compliance. And I don't, I'm going to let Andrew tell you the reasons why a tower should be located there. He's going to be much better at it than I am.
Well, thank you very much, and yeah, thank you so much for your time this evening. This particular tower, we had started off at a much taller tower, but the, for the purpose that this is being done, it doesn't necessarily have to be that tall for the wireless carriers. Essentially, you know, the carriers have towers located in both north and south on Route 495. And they, and currently, they, it provides, you know, some coverage for making phone calls and things like that, but it's not close enough to the industrial park to really provide high-speed data. And with the advent now of 5G, the frequencies that are used in 5G to give you the very extreme high speeds, 500 megabits and gigabyte speeds, you have to have facilities in closer proximity. And because the industrial park is, is an industrial park, you know, a lot of the new techniques and things in 5G are really geared towards factory automation, safety issues, as well as, you know, tracking inventory, all these types of things that are just well-suited for this particular application. And the, the monopole itself is 105 feet, which gives you the ability to put multiple carriers, to stack them at the 10-foot centers at 105, at 90 feet, at 75, and at 60 feet at the lowest. But that's about the lowest effectively that it could work. As you can see, 60 feet here. It covers into some of the industrial park here, but the lowest person's going to be, they'd have more of a challenge. The other three, however, you know, it covers extremely well and will penetrate very, very well inside buildings, as well as, as well as covering the area in general. 75 feet's a bit, bit better, you know, as far as overall coverage. And as we get higher, 90 feet's good. So this will support, you know, Verizon, AT&amp;T Wireless, T-Mobile. And the fourth one potentially could be ditch in the future, but you know, it may or may not ever, ever even come to this area. So 90 feet here covers the entire industrial park area beautifully, covers the entire corridor of Route 495. You know, because the, the next sites are up here and further along here. So those two really don't get into the park at all, so there's a, there's a, quite a gap in the industrial park now, and this will really enhance especially the high-speed data communications. And here's a top, top spot, you know, which really, really covers well both north and south and towards the Norton water tanks, but there are other sites on those. So it's just perfectly positioned, and 105 feet is, is, you know, quite a good radiation center for the, for whichever carrier happens to go on top.
I assume whichever one pays the most money?
No, not really, it's who first come, whoever comes first. You know, they usually have the, it's called the anchor tenant, so they'll typically take the top spot. And, but because the, their main focus is no longer getting as much coverage out there, it's more now focused on, you know, where the actual, you know, people and the traffic density is. That's really the most important part of this, because, you know, it really addresses that, that gap in the middle for those, for those, what are called C-band frequencies, which are in the 3, 3 gigahertz range. And they don't go very far, but, but they can have extreme, there's a lot of bandwidth there, so you get really, really good high-speed data when you're running with it. Whenever you see in your phones, you'll see the 5G. On T-Mobile, you'll see like UC, that's where you get the, you know, 150, 200, 300 megabits.
So are there any questions? The maps that you've shown are all essentially the reach of signals from the tower as it would be located.
Yes.
Do we have any, is there any kind of assessment available as to what the coverage is in that area now from a graphical perspective? Like, are we, in that area, is it going from an F to an A, or is it going from a B to an A?
In that area, it's going about a D to an A.
That would be the, okay.
Yeah, it'd be a D to an A. If I were to show you, you know, I didn't plot one of that, but if I were to show you, it's just a, whereas the red, yellow, and green is good, a lot of blue in there.
Yeah. I know that's a terribly oversimplistic way to think of it.
Yeah.
That was kind of the...
It is, and it has, it has, the way RF, RF propagates is it gets blocked by anything, buildings, trees, whatever. And when you get higher in frequency, you know, it tends not to be, it can be blocked by almost anything, you know, trees and things like that. That's why having a site like this, this is what's commonly known, if a carrier were to come in, they'd say this would be a capacity site, you know, for, for basically capacity and getting into the buildings, because the stuff from several miles away just won't make it. It just doesn't have the juice to get up into this area.
We have the wireless engineer here, I think. We have the additional questions for them at this time. By the way, I don't, Ray, you had some thoughts about this project, and I'll see if...
Yes.
We have any radio questions first, and then we'll, we'll go to you.
Just one, one thing I might bring to your attention, I don't think Andrew mentioned, is that the, the site is a very good choice in terms of location for the tower. Other than servicing the particular area, it happens to be the high point in the area, which gives us some height without actually putting a tower that tall. It's, it's appropriate, appropriately located in terms of, you know, go for the high point, do it in an industrial area. This is a use that is very low impact on the area. You're not generating daily traffic trips, or, you know, hopefully, unless someone decides to vandalize it, you're not going to be calling on police or emergency services.
Do we have an elevation map in the plans?
I don't know if there is one in there or not. Can you turn it over, Andrew? Don't know if they, Chris, do you know if they did an elevation map?
I'm not sure, is it, it should be on the map.
It's an elevation drawing, but it doesn't show the ground, current ground elevation. It says, is it GEO?
There's two other plans here, Andrew.
Second, can you flip through those?
Oh, oh, sorry.
See, there's that set up. There's one here.
Thinking, nah.
Yeah, there's no, there's no actual elevation of the, of the actual, the land and the monopole on top of it, but it, but it may be called out in here. You know, because typically you'd have, you know, topographical.
I have the contours from the site, but it said it's 104 feet. The contours, I have them on my computer for the site.
Oh, yeah.
It's approximately, hmm, 112 towards back of the property. Everything around it is like 80s, 104, 92.
Yeah.
As I indicated, height.
Because it actually does give you additional height, so the 105 feet is actually, you know, with the ground elevation, it gives it good visibility to the industrial park area.
How many carriers can be accommodated on a single monopole?
What you can accommodate for, if the last carrier typically ends up on the bottoms, but this, this is going to be designed for solid three-carrier pole and with the option for a fourth. You know, really, the only difference is in, in, you know, how, how you do the foundation and the steel. You know, to make it solid to carry the full sort of four carriers, but this could do it. There's enough spacing for each carrier to go on there. It's likely at the most you'll get three.
Any additional questions at this time, or?
I got one, too.
Go ahead, Alan, for sure.
Mr. Souza, is there anything required from the airport? Any types of permits, notifications, paperwork, et cetera?
Nothing, I'm aware of it.
Just being close to the airport, sometimes there is...
But we are, we are below the height at which they would need to locate a light on top of the monopole. That's, that's well below the flight line, I know that.
Yeah, and it's not in the glide slope of the runway, so anybody that's taking off or landing, it doesn't go over it. You know, it's, it's actually off-center from the glide slope.
If we were closer to the airport, we were doing this, well, there's, there's already a tower at the 495 Marketplace, but a tower located there would be, you know, much more of a concern than one this far out.
That's fine, I'm comfortable with that. I just want to make sure there wasn't anything, we'd have to put in a decision like, you know, pursuant to permission from the airport, et cetera, but no problem, it's not a problem, thank you.
You're entirely welcome.
Okay. So, Ray, obviously, you're just giving your thoughts, because I know this is, obviously, as Mr. Souza mentioned, this is a project which is in its second iteration here, and it's gone through town a little bit here, so.
Yes, so I have some technical questions, but my, my first question is on, on dimensional requirements. I'm a little confused by our bylaw, which I know the zoning board was too. When it says that facilities should comply with dimensional requirements applicable to structures for the district which are that located, but height and setback limitations of this bylaw will supersede them. And there's a 300-foot buffer that you cannot be closer than that for a residential lot line. But also, I noticed that you're proposing to build structures very close to the lot line, so I think that you might need a variance from zoning board on the regular side. And then there's a different requirement, that's a 300-foot from a residential lot line. That's a different level of dimensional requirement. That's a different level of dimensional requirement. I don't know how the planning board feels, but it looks to me like by building closer to the lot line from just a base zone point of view, you'll be creating two new non-conformities. I think those rear and side setbacks that you'll be encroaching on. And I think that would require a zoning board variance unless this would completely supersede it. But it's not clear to me from reading the bylaw.
Okay.
That was, that was one of the issues that we discussed a number of times with the zoning board of appeals. And the conclusion that we reached was that, and this, again, it was something that was discussed heavily. But we, the conclusion we reached is that if we shorten the tower so that it falls within the confines of the lot, should it ever tip over for whatever reason, that we would be compliant. And we discussed the confusing nature of the bylaw that you raised here. And it's one of the reasons that we gave up pursuing the taller tower and went to something that was shorter, that could stay within the confines of the lot if we were to ever topple.
Are we allowed to make comments?
I'm gonna go through a couple more questions, then I'm gonna make a point to ask if anybody in the audience has questions.
Awesome, thank you.
So Maria, to your point, your point is that the applicant may need additional relief from zoning regardless of what we would do.
I, that's how I interpreted it because you do, you need to be compliant to the base zoning. And there's additional requirements here. That's how I read it. I don't think one will completely supersede the other. Otherwise, why would I then mention the base dimensional requirement standards? But I do agree that the fall radius and the buffer, it seems to me like you meet those. It would just be to build a structure, like generic structure.
Yeah, the discussion, you know, that we had extensively was the difference between a residential use on industrial zoned property versus...
A residential lot.
A residentially zoned property. And there is a residential property adjacent to this, but it's in industrial zoned land. And I have to disagree with 300 feet.
Are you touching any residential structures or residentially used lots regardless of how they're zoned in this buffer?
I don't believe so.
And that this is currently used as residential or as an industrial use?
There is a residential use on the property unless it's been terminated. And one of the things that we advanced to the zoning board of appeals is that that residential use would be terminated before the tower was constructed. We know that, that, we know that going yet, that they're gonna do away with that. And there is Chico LLC on the other side of us there. That's an industrial use.
Yes, I have the land use code here from the assessors database. And I see your property residential, I know that's gonna change. And the next two to this side, their land use code for them is residential right now. Are they not being used as such? I see their structures on them.
The one, the one immediately adjacent to this property is a residential use.
Okay.
But I do believe we have the fall zone distance to prevent intrusion onto their lot.
And that's 125 feet? The tower plus 20?
That was 105.
Okay. And our requires the fall zone is tower plus 20 feet is our safe fall zone?
Is 125 feet.
Yep.
So, so Maria, from your perspective, the applicant feels that they have what they need from zoning, and we're not sure. So the two paths forward would be for us to ask zoning to weigh in on this design, A. Or B, we could potentially put a condition in the decision requiring that the applicant get any applicable variance required by zoning.
And if they don't require it, then...
And if zoning doesn't require, building commissioner doesn't require it, then you'll need to get it. But not that, not that the zoning board isn't above the people, but you may not wanna go another 12 rounds with this, with this again, if they're okay with what it is, so.
Yeah, Tim, that was gonna be my question. Is the building inspector weighing in on any of this? Because ultimately, it's his decision.
He has not, he has not to my knowledge. He has not to my knowledge.
So.
Now, ultimately, it would be the opinion that we need is if there's a, he's the determinant, he's the user makes that decision. So we need him to weigh in.
Yeah, I mean, to a point, if we can put a condition in it and he can weigh in wherever he wants.
Correct. Just trying to say, it doesn't mean he can do it. They still have to conform their accounts.
Right. By not doing them in parallel, the risk is that whatever timeline is in place gets thrown off by whatever building commissioner or zoning decides.
Correct. I mean, there's no, there's no procedure just to go ask the zoning board of their opinion on it. They would have to...
Yep.
That I know of, so, I mean, the building inspector, I don't know, I think he should have been consulted or...
Understood, Alan. Okay. Did you have any additional questions outside of that, the zoning question? I think we've reached the, we understand what we're looking at from that side.
I do have some additional questions, just going through the bylaw quickly. We do require one parking spot and your emergency contact to be on site. I don't see a parking spot there, but I might have missed it. Are you proposing one?
We can certainly add one or even two.
Wow.
Just don't ask us, just don't ask us to do a handicap because we'll have less than 10.
That sounds good. So I have that. And I didn't, I saw a plan to stamp by an engineer, but we do require that it be stamped by an engineer certifying that you meet all FCC, FAA, ANSI requirements. I don't know if, I saw that it was a land surveyor. I don't know if you have any specific kind of engineering stamp for this, but I would like to see it in writing that all of those federal requirements have it met. And I can follow up with the sections of our bylaws later, so you have it in your writing. It's not just confusing. Then we'd also need to see the capacity of the tower. We need to get a CGL from you. I'm not sure at what point we need to get one. It's a certificate of insurance on commercial general liability. I don't know if that's prior to permitting or as to being permitted. There's no timeline. It just says other application procedures, so we need a CGL.
We need it, need it.
I would put that in the prior occup, it says occupancy, but I'm gonna say prior to occupancy conditions.
Prior to use, I guess.
Occupancy equals use, yeah.
Okay.
The occupier in this case being a bunch of electronics in theory.
Best neighbors.
Okay. Did you have anything else that you wanted to review with this one, Maria?
Just one last question. Are there any accessory buildings they're proposing for this? Or just...
I don't, is there gonna be building, Chris?
They're on there, yeah. But within the compound, there's, there's buildings for equipment proposed.
Those are the outline boxes.
They may or may not be used, but they stay within the compound.
I think we only allow for one structure accessory use. Let's see, accessories should be limited to one structure per WCF, but shall not exceed six structures. Interesting.
And the WCF acronym is?
A wireless communication facility. And they cannot exceed 400 square feet in size and 10 feet in height. That shouldn't be a problem, right? They're, they're so small.
No, it's typical shelter, typical shelter dimensions.
Okay.
Can I raise another issue on that point?
Yes.
So the definition of a wireless communication facility is the structure, the tower, with or without a building, the housing will maintain such equipment. The setback requirements makes reference to, one second. Setback of a freestanding wireless communication facility, which includes a building, from a residential structure or property line shall be at least equal to the height of the structure plus 20 feet. By that, if you could pull up map number four.
I saw that number four.
It is. I think you need to measure the distance to the property line from the corner of the compound.
That's the question, I think, that we had from, because it's an industrial lot.
Okay.
With a residential use, so you said residential lot line is not...
But the one next to it is residential.
Right.
But when the bylaw says residential lot line, do they mean a lot zoned residential? Or do they mean any old lot regardless of its zoning if there's a residence on it? I read it to mean if you're next to residential zoning, which this is not.
And they've stated they do have the 125 feet from the pole to that lot line as a fall plus 20 feet.
Right.
And I contend that if there is a building going in that compound, then it needs to be from the dimension of the compound to the property line, meaning shorter. So that bottom left shows where there's gonna be a 10 by 10 building, that one. From that corner is where that line needs to be drawn. That is the wireless communication facility.
But isn't that the height? That building would only be 10 feet, right?
Right, but I'm talking about, yeah, so that...
The tower is one, and then the building is a separate one, no?
No, it's the whole compound is the facility.
The definition includes the structure. Even though the definition could also include not the structure. So the definition is trying to do too much.
Yeah, they are including a structure in this compound.
We are buried in semantics.
Yes.
Okay.
I think I'm, I think I'm lost. You worried about the fall zone?
No.
No, we are, the bylaw is defining the structure as the tower and its accessory building.
It says the wireless communication facility is this whole thing, which would mean you would have to measure from here to here, not here to here.
Which would be 80 feet, 75, 80 feet, which would, the way it is written, not meet the setback requirements. Because the setback requirement in this bylaw is designed for the tower only. Even though the building, which will be 20 feet high, cannot fall 120 feet.
It'd have to...
That would have to be some Wizard of Oz type stuff. I'm not sure if we have a process for this, Brian. Can we put this, a review of this bylaw on our agenda for, say, May or June to look at this? And potentially clarify some of the language?
Although that would be wonderful.
I don't know if we pass the deadline to notify you, Sean? I don't think so, right?
I wouldn't put it on this. I don't think we're prepared to discuss it for this point. I'm thinking after...
Last day for spring.
Okay.
So we have people.
Okay.
Just at some point, review.
Oh, yeah.
Because this is, this is not clear. It tried to be overly clear and it failed.
Yes, I agree.
So, okay. So in theory, the board could grant a waiver from that requirement as part of the special permit conditions if we soften it, correct?
I believe so, yes.
So we would need to very carefully and unfortunately figure out exactly what that waiver would be if we got to that point. But I agree that that is a problem in the language, Laura. So that is something that we'll need to review. I know we did have a member of the public who wanted to ask some questions. Any members of the board have any specific questions for the applicant at this time? Or should I ask them to come forward? If anybody here wants to come and just come to the podium, please. Mr. Suzer, if you don't mind, taking a step back.
No, I will adjourn to the record.
And you can just state your name and address for the record, please. And I realize this seems like I'm a, like I'm a musical teacher, but just direct any questions to the board. And if any require clarification from the applicant, we'll ask for that separately.
Okay. My name is Steve Peszek. I am the resident at 180 South Washington Street. The plans that are in front of you, both digitally and here up on the easel, it is listing the previous occupants and owner as the resident there. But myself, as well as my partner, Kellyanne Harrington, are the co-owners of said property adjacent to the, would be the west of the property within the 125-foot fall zone, not including topographical change and wind and all those other fun things that could happen with 105-foot monopole. I have various questions. I will direct to the board, and then we can take it from there. As far as the current property at 182 South Washington, what is going to happen with the current outbuildings as well as the current resident building before, during, or after construction of said monopole?
So the applicant stated that there wouldn't be anybody living there when the pole went up.
Okay.
In terms of what happens to these shed and the house there. We can ask for clarification, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, just to the idea that if there's not supposed to be anyone living there during construction, can people live there after construction? Because then those will fall.
The residential use would go away.
Yep.
There would be no residential allowed on that lot ever again.
Steve, that will be converted to commercially use. It won't be residential.
Okay. Okay, so within the fall zone, the commercial use would also be in front of that line?
So just, the entire lot would be turned into a commercial use?
Yep, yep, yep. Okay. I understand that. I'm just saying, like, based off of the idea that there has to be a fall zone of 125 feet from front to the back of the property, then the front half of the property closest to South Washington could be used commercially, and the rear part would be the monopole zone.
In theory, yes. There are no, the plans do not show any structures at that time. But again, we're, I was gonna ask for clarification on that.
Okay. Are there any extra utilities that will need to be brought in to support the tower?
I don't know, but we can ask for clarification on that as well.
Okay.
There'll be additional power brought in to the site.
Okay. As far as FCC guidelines are concerned in regards to environmental review for any sort of telecommunications device erected, there are multiple different types of review processes with the National Environmental Policy Act, the Endangered Species Act, and I know you've already touched on the FAA regulations in regard to it. But those are all things that before any sort of telecommunications tower is erected, need to be completed and filed, as well as there is a antenna structure registration government body. And is, has it been approved by any and all of those bodies before construction could be created? That's what I have questions about. Additionally, is there potential health risks based off of what is proposed? I know that based off of some of the site things that we saw as far as cell coverage and how many bars we will have, what types of potential fallout or radiation and/or extra health concerns are there with said property and said usage? Currently at our residence... Currently at our residence, we have someone that has to use hearing aids every single night. And so the hack, the usage of high frequency waves directly next door could potentially harm their ability to have a quality of life. As well as they use, they are a work from home individual and pretty much all residents besides pets in the adjacent property are work from home individuals. So just kind of the general concern of how that potentially could affect. Living there as well as during construction or deconstruction of any said property there. I know that based off of. I believe it was page two within the bylaws, it said that there was a thirty-one hundred and sixty square foot construction impact zone. That was designated and based off of that, it believes that our residents and some potential other residents and or industrial properties could be falling in that. Is there, has there been any sort of consideration as far as disturbance for those things, as far as noise, air quality, anything to that?
Just to say it's page two of the the plans you're saying.
Yes, I believe it's, I don't wanna like touch anybody's work that's not mine. So I believe, I believe on page two of it, or maybe it's three, there's in the subsection on the right side there in the bylaws, I believe it's towards. The middle on the right there. I don't know which number it is without having my phone on me. But it says that there is. A construction.
The total impact area of the site is bounded by, okay.
Correct. So based off of that square footage and the location of the property lines, I'm guessing that. Our residents and property would fall into that area.
No, all of the disturbed construction area would be within their lot line. They probably have to go onto your property.
I understand, I understand like traveling, but is there any sort of like excess worry with, like I said, like noise pollution, air quality pollution? Anything towards that within that construction zone adjacent or those?
Of.
Worry?
That would not fall under the disturbed construction site that you noted on the plan in terms of noise construction and. Dust being kicked up by a backhoe or something like that. That's something that we we do take into consideration.
Okay. As far as, do you know of any sort of, do we have like a timeline of once approved from? That moment, what it would take to move forward with the whole project?
That hasn't been stated yet, but I can ask you to follow up as well.
Okay. Did you have any other questions? Okay. Just wanna make sure. Yeah, it looks like I'm making sure I'm getting to all my points. Yeah, those are kind of my just general information asks at this time.
Okay.
If things are gonna be tabled and brought back, I will definitely stay abreast of that information and follow up.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Suzie, if you went, your colleague, if you'd like to come up, I think.
Sure.
You may be able to answer some of those clarifying questions related to the site and some of the other approvals that might be required.
Chris, one more question.
So I'll refer to whichever one of you would like to to speak specifically, but I think some of them were tied together. As mentioned, the what review processes are needed slash are already in process with FCC and any other bodies for telecommunications? And how would that affect a potential timeline?
Sure. I'm the consultant on the project, Chris Olson. So the, we're here today, obviously, to get a special permit. That doesn't mean, we cannot, you know, obviously build anything until the building department has looked over and approved everything that that has, you know, come forward. I suppose I heard the conversations about the zoning by law and if variances or so forth could be needed, the building inspector could make that determination at that point. We've looked at it heavily. We had several deliberations with the ZBA and we specifically scaled it back to be in total conformity with. Well, conformity without meeting zoning, right? FAA does not require lighting on these sites unless they're over two hundred feet. This site is one hundred and fifteen feet and that was chosen to accommodate the tower fall zone plus twenty to our neighbor's lot line, right? The carriers that would go on the site are licensed. They have their, you know, their their frequency bands. They're regulated by the FCC. We have nothing to do with the FCC.
They apply when they go on a tower. They put in the FCC applications, the FAA, as well as the NECA requirements. So from that perspective, you're providing the structure, they have to go through all the red tape.
Exactly. It would be like if you had a strip mall, you had tenants coming, they have to comply with licensing for whatever they're doing. It's a little more elevated with federal licensing, of course, but it's the same, it's the same concept. And the building department has complete control over issuing permits, the site and so forth. This site, the, by the way, the elevation on this site is one eleven. It is, you know, I should have the number, but it's a good thirty feet or so above. One of the reasons why, one of the reasons why this site was chosen, you, I can show you one of the maps here. This site is the highest point around and it picks up the bend in the highway, which gives it, Andrew plotted this out. The, not that you care about the Taunton industrial park, it's a Taunton industrial park, but it also hits the Norton industrial park a lot more, especially closer. And we have, the town's done an incredible job bringing in some serious industry into that park. And partnership with companies like Klondike. So that will service both Norton and the Taunton Park as well as fill in the hole between the sites along four ninety-five. Okay.
All right. But in terms of time, so obviously the building commissioner and the building department are controlling permits.
The early.
If you have, if you have, you have all the permits you need, what is the process, what is the timeline and process for construction and then carriers being equipped up there roughly?
So you'd have to order the monopole, right? And that's like. You know, it's like ordering anything in construction to take these lead times with just getting the material and the scheduling and so forth. I would not see this, if this were, if this were approved tonight, you have obviously a three to four week break, you know, the, you know, period for, you know, for getting, for. Being, even being able to apply for a permit, right?
Right.
We wouldn't even, we wouldn't apply for a permit probably until we had our, all of our, the construction drawings together, right? And we had a better schedule for the material and who was building and so forth. I mean, the people that would build this would be one or three vendors that built. These sites up and down the corridors that, and everybody's licensed. The whole project, obviously, would run through its checks and balances. This is the first step for us. So to answer your question, it would be six months out.
Can I add a question?
Yeah.
When you guys were working with zoning and you said you scaled back, were they going from the tower location or from the compound where the building was? What was their interpretation?
Nobody ever talked about the compound.
Just from the.
Purely, purely the height of the tower that caused the falls out, that caused the concern.
Jim was wondering that actually. It was, it was also its type of tower. Your bylaw only allows monopoles. And there's a, I have a picture of a very, a very good picture of the, like the one on, you know, like the pole on one forty. Up at the Taunton line.
Yeah.
Be very similar to that, that structure. So the, the, the ZBA, the ZBA pushback was the, the structure, the height of the structure. And then obviously the, the, the fall zone. The entire area is obviously industrial. I mean. You know, it's, you know, I remember ten years ago was all houses, as recently as ten years ago, and you couldn't sell a house over there. And now it's that, that run of land has become highly, highly coveted industrial land. We have a, a plate company next to us. We have a trash company next to them. We have dumpster companies next to them. It is moved in the direction of, of, I would call it light industrial. With touching on, I don't know, trash company is kind of, to me, a more heavy industrial, but the trash company that's on that, on. Two goes over from us. Those trucks are running at four AM. They're, the, the old. The former masonry company now is a dumpster company. So the, the uses are, are getting more and more intense.
Lots of changes. And this board, your folks know better than anybody. You see all the site plan reviews. You can see how that area is changing. And it's, it's Charlie's say finally starting to blossom. I mean, it was zoned industrial for a long time and there wasn't much going on there. Now I look, now, you know, Norton is running out of land. And people are looking to parcels that they did not look at previously.
The, I don't know if you're familiar with the, the, the lot that has the FedEx trucks on it? There's a lot there with FedEx trucks. It was an old house. I actually couldn't sell that house fifteen years ago for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's worth a hundred thousand dollars today. It just speaks to the, what's the zoning impact and what's been permitted in that area. And there's actually three residential houses left, one of them ours, that'll change over. Our neighbor who spoke tonight, and then I don't believe the neighbor next to you, are they still there?
They are still there.
They're still there, okay. That's Suzie, I believe. That's, so there's, there'll be two left out of what used to be, you know, twenty, twenty-five houses.
You mentioned that, one of the questions that the neighbor raised was in terms of. The intended disposition of the existing structures on the site, meaning the shed and the one-story building. Has that been?
I mean, that's gonna, you will gonna be back before you for that for some point for a commercial development. It's not determined if we'll just keep those and convert them to commercial. Or if they'll just be repurposed for, you know, the gentleman that was in before us, who's doing warehouse bays, it could become a concept like that.
There's already one, few lots down the way doing that.
What's that?
There's already one, few lots down.
He's, he's our other neighbor, that he owns a couple of properties. But the gentleman that was here tonight, it could be a concept like, they're not, not that big, of course, because he's gonna be a lot. I'm familiar with all those projects. So. But, but it'll be something that'll be along the lines of, you know, an industrial use. We've had marijuana people approach us. We haven't engaged any of it. We're just thinking about it. We've left it as a rental, which is coming to an end shortly. Cause it's gonna get re, the whole pit will be redeveloped.
So, so in terms of what would happen with the site? The existing structure may stay there, but in any case, the front of the lot would be used for commercial uses.
It would be, we're not gonna allow residential use on the site. My understanding is it's not allowed with a wireless permit and if that's the case, then that would be. And they've been made aware of that. Those, in fact, those tenants were specifically chosen. Very good relationships with them. They, one, one's moving forward, the other one's in transition.
But the, the plans for the front of the site to remain in use at some point in the future under a commercial use.
Yes, it'll be commercial use. It will not be occupied. It will not be occupied before construction. However, that, I don't know the exact, whatever the code, whatever the code is, is what it is.
Yeah, I, I think we have the, the clarification that we're looking for in terms of that.
But we would expect that you would cite that in your decision for the special permit. I mean, I would expect nothing less. And, you know, there, there's no intent to, you know, keep it as a residential property here. It's just, don't know exactly what the hurdle form is gonna take.
That's fine.
Yeah, and I suppose if the town owns something industrial eventually, that's, that's what you're gonna get.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Related to noise, we have a limit on fifty, is it decibels, fifty B? How loud are towers? I would expect them to be very loud.
They're not, you know, even, even, even the, the, even the air conditioning that's used for each of them is, especially now with the, a lot of the movement of reducing power requirements, all those things. But they're very quiet. You know, you get twenty, thirty feet away from it, you can't hear a thing.
The, the uses in that strip are, are, some of them are noisy. Where are, the use of the tower and the use we would have in the future will not be anything like what's starting going on over there.
Just, just for clarification, we don't, Norton does not have any noise by law, but as a whole, the wireless by law specifically has a noise threshold. So that's why it wouldn't be compared to the other uses because they are wireless facilities. So that's.
Oh, okay, yeah. They'll just round it out, so.
So that's, that's beside the point.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question. Would this monopole be leased or bought outright?
It's, would be owned by the owner.
Okay, okay.
And then the spaces, the, the, the companies that would go on there would lease the space on the tower.
Right, okay, so the actual equipment itself wouldn't just be leased out? It would be actually worked out, right?
No, they own it.
Okay, I understood. And the other question, has there been, I used to be more for you specifically, you know, I don't know if you would know this, but has there been, you know. Issues regarding supply chain, you know, worker shortages for something like this potentially getting started but not getting finished on time for one of those reasons? Has that happened over the past few years in this industry?
Yeah, you know, the, the industry actually geared up before a lot of these shortages when, when they were starting to become apparent. So as far as radio equipment and everything, they've got, you know, plenty of radio equipment to go in. As far as the steel and the monopoles, you know, there's not much of a shortage there because, you know, tower, tower building has, you know, has been very, you know. There haven't been a lot until this new five G wave has hit. Now it's starting to ramp up, but, you know, from my experience, I haven't seen, you know, anything more than twelve weekly times and things like that. So it's not, not dramatic at all.
So thank you.
Steve, can we ask you questions or do some that we have in Delaware?
I mean, they've even been answered in my opinion. Did you?
I still, I'm, I just, I don't know how they work, so the, the hearing aid thing is kind of important to us, so I'm having the expert here tonight.
Well, well, you know, what, what happens is each of the carriers is responsible for when they do their FCC filings, FAA filings. And when they do their, their ASR, which is the registration of the tower. Part of the FCC filings are that it is in compliance with the current FCC regulations of power field density. And the, one of the other elements with this is because the antennas are very directional. They, they don't go directly into your house. They're up over your house. So the field density of the energy gets much, much weaker as you move down underneath the tower and the proximity around it. And in my experience, you know, with, with, mainly with hearing aids, with other, hearing aids have to meet a filtering requirement so that nothing can interfere with them. Or unless you have one that's from China or something that doesn't get approved. And in, in those instances, you know, you typically, hearing aids aren't interfered with. It was an old technology. They used to be, but this newer technology doesn't interfere with electronics. It doesn't give you a buzz or any kind of field through that runs through it. So, you know, I haven't seen, and I've experienced, you know, hundreds and hundreds of different sites designing, working with them for years, now for forty years. So I, I, you know, I'm not, I haven't seen anything related to hearing aids and things like that as far as a problem with it, so.
Is there any other general health concerns that have been with the newer technology?
No, not that we've, I mean, there've been a bunch of, you know, articles and things in Europe about, you know, it doing mind control and all these things. You know, you gotta take that with a grain of salt because the same frequencies that have been used now, that are being used now in towers all around the town are the same frequencies that are being used in this tower. So, you know, it would have popped up a long time ago if there were any. Plus, there's so many tests that have been done on this and nothing is ever conclusive. Because the, the nature of RF radiation is non-ionizing, so, you know, and some of the elements, when I've testified before on these things. You know, if you look at other items, microwaves, household monitors, baby monitors, they put out more energy in, in the close, near field that you are than the tower would, you know, coming at your house. So, you know, it's very, very, it's very safe as far as what I've experienced, but each carrier has to certify that as part of their FCC. Input for putting the radio equipment there, they have to meet. they have to meet and exceed that requirement. So, you know, yeah, every which way you look at it, there's a safety barrier that has to be met. So that's not something I would worry about.
Okay, thank you.
And then the last thing I, I had just wanted to clarify, I know Chris just kind of said six months minimum when we would start, but will be, will be the duration of the actual construction, not when would it start? What's the duration of the construction approximately in your experience?
You've asked.
Or any, I guess, Chris, anybody's know, how long?
It's like, it's like 30 to 45 days because they go up like a retro set, they come in pieces.
Yeah.
Yeah, and these, it's not, there's no plumbing. It's electrical, obviously. But they go, they go up pretty quick. And everything is ordered, you know what I mean? Like they order everything they need and then it's there. It, it doesn't take, it'll, it literally goes up in a couple of days, then there's more stuff to clomp on the fence, all that has to do. But it's all, everything's pretty fabricated.
And all that, and then all the telecom and electric, would that run underground from the street side? Or would that be transmitted through like a triplex over to it?
It would be, it would be partially above ground and then as you get closer to the side, it would probably go, go underground.
I'm gonna go into dangerous territory. You mentioned non-ionizing radiation as a clarifying point. Can you give me the telechemical fifth grade or definition of the difference?
Well, DMC, non-ionizing radiation is a radiation that essentially it heats some, it'll heat water, it'll heat liquid. You know, so for instance, think of a microwave. Ionizing radiation is nuclear, you know, when you're, you're bombarded by X-rays, gamma rays, you know, a nuclear demolition, anything like that. That's ionizing radiation. And the difference is ionizing radiation, radiation stays in your cells, it stays in your body, it builds up. And you have a certain level, and once you go past it, then you start breaking DNA and having, that's why, you know, ionizing is not.
X-ray techs and things like that.
Yeah, it's not, not a happy, happy thing. Non-ionizing is, you know, is just like, I mentioned microwave, your radio, your phone. It's just basically a radio frequency that travels. And depending on what, if it's, if it's water or if it's something else, certain frequencies cause it to warm up and heat up, just causes it to be excited. But with these particular, because the wavelengths that we're talking about here are typically our height or taller or, yeah, some of them are the length of a football field. You know, it doesn't, there's not enough focus or concentrated energy to cause any type of ionization unless you Velcro yourself to the antenna. Then you could run into problems, but it's very difficult to do that.
Protested.
Yeah.
And that's why there's a sign, yes.
Exactly, this, this signage, plus it's high enough off the ground, it's very difficult to Velcro yourself to it, so, you know.
Okay.
And it sounds silly, but that's really what you'd have to do.
Anyone have any additional questions for the applicant at this time? I don't think there's no reviews or anything that we're waiting on from that perspective from any kind of stormwater or anything like that, because they're not disturbing that area.
Our conservation director is away, so I don't think he's had the chance to review it. He'll be back on Tuesday, so he'll be able to look at the limit of work if you're clearing over, there's a permit if you clear over 20,000 per feet and a different permit if you're clearing over 40,000, depending on that.
I don't think it's even close here.
Yeah, they said the area disturbance is.
3,000 per feet.
Yeah, the limit of work is 3,160 square feet. Below the exemption threshold and, yeah, so.
I think he'll be fine, but I mean, I can check with John next week.
I mean, I would think if you did approve, it would be subject to conservation review as, as required.
Yes.
The only question with that would be if a stormwater review was required and then we needed to reopen some kind of public hearing or something to review that, then that would be.
Yeah, the compound is gravel, mostly, except for the foundation of the pads and the tower. But that 40 by 40 compound is mostly gravel around the compounds in the tower.
Okay. He's also a stormwater agent, so he has, you know, authority over a lot of things. I'll take with him on the stormwater side, I'll go back to you.
So we have a potential question on stormwater, but we think will be below the threshold requiring a review. The wording of whatever we would say would need to go through this bylaw, which is not perfect, and I'll stop there. So all, as members of the board, is there anything that we want to ask the applicant to provide for us? Do we feel there's any additional information that we'd want from them? And Mr. Suzie, by the same token, is there anything that you are still waiting for that you want to provide for us at a future meeting, meeting you're looking for a continuance for further discussion?
I'm hopeful that we answer to the best of our ability everyone's questions here this evening. I think that, you know, this is a pretty straightforward proposal. If you're comfortable voting on this this evening, I mean, we would welcome. Every applicant that comes before you wants to leave with whatever it is they're seeking, that's no secret. I don't mean to rush you. If you're prepared to vote, we would love it. If you think that you require something else from us, then, you know, we'll certainly say, put this over to another meeting and we'll provide it. But I'm not sure exactly what it is that we need to provide. I think that, you know, we've tried to touch on everything here. I mean, if, if you don't feel satisfied, let us know.
I just asked the question.
No, I'm just saying, it's like, I, I think we've had a good review of the project here this evening. If, if there's something you want, just let us know, we'll do our best to provide it. Otherwise.
We expect conditions like the stormwater, if that's required, that's no problem.
And again, as I mentioned before, we expect that you would cite that there can be no residential use in whatever is there needs to terminate before the project goes fully. You know, those are givens.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My only additional thought is do we need or does the bylaw require any type of decommissioning plan such as when you deal with billboards, et cetera?
Not that I know of.
No.
There's not.
Three, I think, three months before you want to decommission it, that's when you submit something. But we don't require one at the time of application. Seems like an overstep.
That, that does seem like something that would be helpful in a bylaw of this length and detail, yes. But to answer your question, Alan, there is not a requirement for a decommissioning plan in the bylaw?
I didn't think so, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss it. Add to the list of the thousand things we need to work on.
So we have just an order of operations. This is a special permit and we're in a public hearing. So we can choose to close the public hearing, we can choose to continue. And we can, if we so choose, we can close the public hearing and do a vote at a separate meeting like we did with Pine Street, so.
No motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Again, that would stop discussion. Any further discussion on that motion? Okay, I will go through the roll with members for that motion. Again, this is the motion to close the public hearing. So Eric?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, apparently I don't like to say aye. Okay, so the public hearing is closed for 182 South Washington Street. Do we have any further motions requested, either in terms of moving to a vote or in terms of tabling discussion for a future meeting?
I guess my question would be regarding that, you know, the building and the 125 feet. Is that something that we need further clarification on before we can give a vote on anything? Would that require a continuance to further dates we can review it?
So the discussion, I believe that the bylaw, our question is, we can interpret the bylaw in a couple of different ways. We can also grant waivers to those based on the plans being presented.
Right.
Because the applicant went, went before zoning, they said, okay, here's the fall line, here's the lot line. We did what you told us to, and they feel they're in compliance. Does that potentially conflict with the wording of the bylaw? Yes, but we would have to, we would be, is it coming up with a waiver for that in our decision? If we, if we felt that was appropriate. So, yes, the wording, we would need to overrule that wording. Whether there be a clarification on it one way or another, we could probably read this three different ways. So if we choose to, so if we had a vote to approve, the vote would be to approve and define a waiver.
Or we also have.
Defining the fall line to the lot line. For the tower itself.
Would there be any precedent to this in, that we could refer to? It just, you know, so we wouldn't have to make the interpretation just based on wording?
I don't think we have one related to wireless communication facilities in Norton. I think that, I think the bylaw conflicts with itself, so it's hard to.
So if I make a motion, I'm gonna have to bring up the fact that we're gonna need a waiver for the bylaw and also the condition of ensuring that it stays commercial and no residential.
I think that's part of the bylaw, but yeah, the non-residential use I think is required in the bylaw, so that's a condition.
And that can just be standard conditions with a waiver of the fall zone?
Yes, and we may need to.
Can I ask, in regards to setback requirements, are we to view those simply as safety related in this instance?
My personal opinion is the safety ones are the fall zone, but they're still the structure too near a lot line requirement that would create non-conformity. So half of them are safety, half of them are just general zoning.
And for those, they would need zoning if they feel, if zoning feels disneeding. So they're asking for our approval prior to getting the relief from zoning. So they run high risk. So zoning's saying we don't like it, and then it's come back to us. But that's how they proceeded. So, and the other condition would be zoning board approval on setbacks.
Would that just be standard conditions, since they have to go for that, or would that be a special condition?
It might fall under standard conditions, but it doesn't.
So this is gonna be.
I don't think the applicant would take it personally if they put it this way twice, so.
So then I would make a motion for special permit 17417, approval of the standard conditions and waiver requirement for fall zone bylaw interpretation?
Okay.
Would that be a proper way of wording all of that?
I think so. What the exact wording of that would be is still probably the hard part, but yes, so we have a motion.
Could I ask a question? So they go back to ZVA? Do they have to then come back to us if ZVA changes something?
Potentially, yes, it would be, they would have to come to us as, in terms of if it was a major or minor modification to the special permit.
Mr. Chairman?
With a close public hearing.
May I ask a follow-up question on ZVA? If the building inspector, just as his authority on that, doesn't like something, again, that would be under the same umbrella, right? Be a modification.
They need permitting, they know all permitting, so it needs to go through the building.
Okay, thank you.
They don't have, have his permit, they can't do anything.
Okay.
So. If he says they need a variance from zoning, they need a variance from zoning. If zoning says no, if he can change something, then it will come all the way back to us, would that change? So we have a motion from Jim, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve with conditions and potential waivers regarding setbacks related to the mentioned requirements in the wireless communication bylaw. Any further discussion on the motion to approve? Again, the motion is a need affirmative to approve. Okay. On the motion to approve with conditions, I'll go through the roll again. And Eric, I will start with you.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Wayne?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Okay.
Thank you very much.
We will work on the decision and get that over to you in due course.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you all, have a good evening. Give us a moment to gather up many.
So that concludes the public hearing section of our agenda this evening. Do we have any additional new business that wasn't on the table that we wanted to discuss at this time? Yes, Laura?
Can you, sorry, in regards to my email earlier, and if you want to table it for another day, that's fine.
Sure.
Can you just explain the purpose of the certificate of approval of the decided subplan, subdivision plan? And why it's different from the decision of mine document? What's the purpose of that document?
Sure. Would you be able to provide just the clarification of the reason it would be?
This is ridiculous.
I know, I know this was through, you consulted with a number of other planning departments in the area just to determine the certificate of approvals and the reason it's different from the decision.
So what I consulted on the plan is about was the process for sureties. I'm not so much this, that's fine. To my understanding, a certificate of approval is required by state laws. I think it's 48, section 85X. And that's just to, to record things, you know, just an official way of recording stuff. And the findings are for legal decisions and then the conditions are just, they're more procedural. If I think about it, I can respond to that nicely in your email. But I know that just the approval is just, we need somehow to record it.
Okay. And it's required by state law?
Yes.
It's only required for subdivisions or is it only required for cluster subdivisions?
I think it's for all subdivisions.
Okay.
And I can, I'll go back to you on that email.
Okay.
In a better word way.
If you wanted a copy, everybody, I don't know whether anybody else had the same question, but I know going through it, I started questioning why there was two. We hadn't seen a certificate of approval before, or I hadn't in my tenure, so I was wondering why there were two of them and what the purpose of each was. Well, I understand what the finding and determination is, I didn't understand the purpose of the other one.
I will get to it now.
Thank you.
I don't recall specifically, not that I trust my memory. I don't recall specifically, not that I trust my memory on decisions in the past with subdivisions, but I would also say that it's possible that was something that prior planners did using, did outside of the decision, and didn't remain with us line by line. Because of all the fee, all the surety and things like that, I think our general approach has been, the bylaws said, the bylaws and state laws say what we need to do with it, so we do it, and the treasurer says how they want it, so there's nothing for, not a whole lot for us to discuss unless we're refereeing between the treasurer and the applicant, which didn't happen with Blue Star. Because the treasurer did not, the treasurer's request for the former misterity did not, was not what content wanted, something along those lines. So that was...
And that's something I, when I talked to the other planners, some of them had different approaches to how to do sureties, but bottom line is, we can never outright require a specific type. But when you approve it, it needs to, they have to be the ones to propose it, and we just have to, as, as long as it's within state law, and then once you want to start building, that's when you usually switch to either cash or bond. A lot of times I've seen decisions, like you, they require a bond from the get-go, and that's not okay. Not that I have seen it here, but, you know, in general.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything else that'd like to discuss in the open session?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Eric?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
Danny?
Aye.
Laura?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Alan?
Aye.
Oh, yes. Thank you very much, everybody.